This is an November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of Woodstock Community Unit Schools and Security Board of Education. Please rise and applaud the legion. There is God behind you, there is God behind everyone, but there is one behind us. Applaud the legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Dr. Bigwell?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Present.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Hoodley?
Here.
Mr. Hornet? Mr. Misselli?
Here.
Mr. Parisi?
Here.
Okay, first item on our agenda tonight is our consent agenda. Please take a look at the consent agenda. If there's any items that anybody wishes to have removed from the consent agenda, please welcome them. Also, please take a look at the agenda that is also on the, um, on your desk. As I know, I have to be full and entertain emotions.
Move to end the reading of approved consent agenda as permitted in the board agenda, including the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five personnel agenda.
Good morning, Mr. Parisi, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Bigwell, roll call please.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Dr. Bigwell?
Yes.
Mr. Hoodley?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our recognition. All right, we're very excited to recognize that a student athlete with suspect. So first, we'll recognize, uh, our young team kind of, by that term called country, right, Emily Shuck, he's an all-state winner, multiple-time state qualifier, one of the outstanding ones, a hit two outstanding programs, who we have been, uh, all these nights, and then our staff. Okay. Moving into this following resolution, where the Board of Education of Woodstock Community Unit Schools and Security, which is to recognize the contributions of these individuals and where this security benefited as a result of these accomplishments. Now therefore, we recall that the Board of Education of Woodstock Community Unit Schools and Security, hereby since this place does special recognition of the certificate of achievement on behalf of the citizens of the district. Second. Motion by Mr. Gilmore, seconded by Mr. Parisi, roll call please.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Hoodley?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bigwell?
Yes.
We're gonna start with all-state cause country, one of those five state football clubs, most of them all-state athletes. Alresha? That's three months. Polling interview for our staff members.
Tonight, the purpose is to recognize two special rockers. Please join me and welcome our first, our tenant secretary, Mrs. Robyn Semenow. Mrs. Semenow has worked in the district for numerous years in many different roles. She has been a job coach, a classroom and loaner loan associate, and is now our tenant secretary. I like to call this Semenow the sunshine out of my office. As you can always see her smiling, sharing a good laugh, changing her lyrics to a popular song, and she's always singing, by the way, she has a beautiful voice. We even invited a couple of our students who would like to share with me all about Mrs. Semenow.
Hello, good evening. My name is Juliana Minkes. I'm here to speak about Mr. Semenow. The great thing I want to say is you Semenow always leads me to talk every day. Whenever I get to school, I look at Mrs. Semenow in her office and I love talking to her. She makes me so happy. She is definitely one of the reasons why I'm always smiling. Thank you, Mrs. Semenow, for being beautiful, kind, and thoughtful. I really appreciate you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Smith-Rednaw, and I'm a seventh grader at Northwood Middle School. I would like to recognize Mrs. Semenow for helping me with everything and for being a really good secretary. And though of all the time to laugh and giggle, thank you for the positivity and solving problems before anyone notices. Thank you for encouraging us, and we will have you in our conference.
Thank you, Robyn. Please join me and welcome the eighth grade science teacher, Mrs. Debbie DeChant. Mrs. DeChant has been a rock for many years. Her heartfelt passion for students, for teaching, and for our school is something special. Debbie's thoughtfulness and humor help her to connect with students, and there is no doubt that every student who has blessed to have her as a teacher knows that she cares about them. This year, science team has used new resources, and she has embraced them fully. She is positive, creative, and very passionate about students' understanding of chemistry and physics. Mrs. DeChant also inspires us to be more green in our practices. Finally, we would like to recognize her commitment to our Veterans Day initiatives, year after year. We've also invited a couple of her students who would like to share their well promises to DeChant.
Good evening. My name is Helen. I'm part of Mrs. DeChant's fifth-grade science class. Mrs. DeChant is creative in how to help all of her students. She never rushes assignments, but instead, Mrs. DeChant prioritizes classes or understanding. She wants us to succeed in her class even if the experiment takes longer than expected, and she is actively involved with us in the lab, answering questions and offering support to kids. Her dedication to our success makes her an exceptional teacher. Thank you, Mrs. DeChant.
Good evening. My name is Lily Holmes. Mrs. DeChant is one of our wonderful teachers. She pushes her students to work hard and grow, so bringing an occasional viewer to her class. She's a great listener and is open to all students' ideas and questions. She pushes us to think, work hard, and learn, and honestly make our limits. She brings attention to life and importance to our students. I cried and lost something she allowed me to look for, even though I never cried, the fact that the next day she remembered that I lost it and asked me about it made her so compassionate. So, Mrs. DeChant, thank you for being one of the wonderful teachers that makes schools so enjoyable and fun.
Good evening. My name is Angela Palomati. I'm an eighth grader at Northwood Middle School. I'm here to talk about Mrs. DeChant, my science teacher. Mrs. DeChant is a wonderful teacher. She helps us when we need it and makes a classroom learning. Some of the ways she shows us is by teaching the class, with the students dancing, and all the better self-confidence. We learn how things work by doing labs and testing materials ourselves in our class. What really is meaningful to me is Mrs. DeChant's character for teaching students about Veterans and Veterans Day. This year, Mrs. DeChant asked my mom to come and talk to her classes. My mom is an Army veteran and was able to share with the students all because Mrs. DeChant asked her to. I felt proud and good that Mrs. DeChant did that and the students liked the stories my mom shared. Overall, Mrs. DeChant is a great teacher and cares about the community. I love being in class and I hope that future generations will love her class as much as we can.
But as you can hear, we are two amazing rockers, and we're so grateful that they welcome us every day. Thank you, Mrs. DeChant and Mrs. Semenow.
All right, I'm gonna back off quick, definitely just kidding. For there is DeChant.
Are we done?
In just a couple minutes, we're gonna continue with the rest of our business being, uh, starting with communications, so good morning. Uh, you're welcome to stay if you'd like to, but we also recognize a lot of people coming primarily to the recognition. So for those of you who don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, and you're welcome to stay at home meeting, let me thank you for coming to not do, uh, today, and we will resume in about two minutes, okay? Thanks for calling, and we'll be right back. Okay, then, moving on, the next item on our agenda is our communications. Communications, there are times when community members of district employees express a point of view, not to debate any issues. Inside our sheets and public will identify their name, address, phone number, phone number, name of organization representative, and a brief description of the topic to be addressed. Count us as our general unit in three minutes in accordance with board policy two colon two thirty, and otherwise government board policy two colon two thirty. Did anyone sign up? Anybody sign up, pardon? If nobody signed up to speak to the board, was anybody in the public wish to address the board at this time? If you're welcome to address, even if you didn't sign up. Okay. Uh, are there any staff comments? Any board comments? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to our next item, which is the super consensus board. All right. Heading into the holiday season, the weekend school this week, the fall off next week, on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, Thanksgiving. We come back like three nice, nice stretch of three full weeks until one of our break. Next month's a great time for everyone to enjoy any of the challenges that our students display, uh, in many different areas. Number performances from all of our private bands and orchestra next month, our sports are starting up this week and next. So everybody can take a calendar, you can look on the website and see, any day of the time, but a great opportunity to go see students, see great performances, games, things like that, this time of year, and like, give us something to do. And then this is also school workers' change week. On behalf of districts, our administration, staff, students, parents, and our community, and I think our school board members, their dedication, their hard work, the tired effort they give to our students and our district, and kept them up, we all appreciate the work you do. Thank you so much. Thank you, curriculum. Okay, uh, well, the other next item, I went with the monitoring report. All right. So, so yearly document, yeah, I are, just a, I will declare, the numbers jump a little bit, it's the same, I don't really agree, but it's getting changed, it's scrolling. I sent you a, uh, lengthy document in there, if you'd really like, and I, 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 we, we do love mostly comparison stuff, so it keeps it pretty simple anyway, but just in case you want to know your questions about that. So we start with the overall scores. Uh, you know, our league score, we have support in four blank two, we go fifteen last year, sixty-nine for this year, math in twenty-six, thirty, thirty-one. And we just kind of can see, because we're jumping scores, you know, how we're gonna get the state average. So, in literacy, you know, our sixteen-nine for four, the state average is fifty-two point six, so one hundred thirty percent of the state average in literacy, which, you know, fairly high, of course. And then in math, we're still one, four-one point seven, so almost one hundred nine, one hundred ten percent of the state average in math, just to give you a general overview. So when I look at the county, our overall growth score, uh, in reading, you can see we, we do the larger districts in the county, and you can see more of the larger districts in the county grow, uh, revised. All right, so highest in reading growth, uh, either County County, which is good. Third grade reading, so we, you know, fir- thirds, first grade, we, we test with the third, sixth and middle school, and eighth, the elite middle school. In third grade, we trail Harley, and then we carry, carry Chris Lake, however. Uh, by the time you get to sixth grade now, we lead the county, uh, all of us little schools. And then in eighth grade again, uh, we lead the county, that was the power margin. So, yeah, for a number of reasons, dual language, you know, linear deposition programs, things like that, we, you know, we were, we started in the next spot in third grade, but then we go to the sixth, and by eighth grade, we were pretty healthy, read, countywide, uh, in reading, so we had high schools, nicely, uh, all looking hand out of that sucker, and everybody home, right? Okay, math growth, uh, countywide, and math. Again, we're strong in nursing math, so that's constant effort for us, but on math growth score, uh, I think the highest in the County County, um, you know, larger districts, which is good. Third grade math, you know, as that score expanded, uh, we took a little bit dip here, uh, and we analyzed, we a kid that, you know, uh, we didn't grow much in that, because we expanded, but cut scores to people around us, they're disappointing for us, but, you know, we, we were trying to look at some reading score, look at the data, and even if we explained that, we talked about a couple times, we do more about, and a lot of research on math, if we kind of could swing back, really, to that, that area acquisition, and just, you know, knowing those, those basic facts and skills, so spring math is something we've done this year, um, to do that. Once we get to sixth grade, you know, we, we trail Harley, and then eighth grade, uh, we're moving off by twenty-four percent, so. In math, too, we, we gain a ton in middle school, you know, our, our, like, uh, probably up in middle school, our kids leading eighth grade, uh, they're high, I think we blew off them a bit this year, but we, we're not gonna have a home, we had a number lost in the county. When we look at, just twelve middle schools, uh, twelve reading scores, all middle schools in the county, Crete side more, more mixed too, um, so that, you know, we'll group on that. So when we look at, districts that look like that state line, we use districts from Harvard, Berkeley, and Morley, and Sterling, demographically, those are very similar districts, and we can test, uh, reading growth, uh, we're the highest in the state overall group. Uh, and then we look at eighth grade, we're considered higher than everyone else, demographically, looks like Austin State and Arnold. Take growth in math, again, we're higher, not like why I want to, but we're higher for sure than that state group. And then by eighth grade math, uh, considered higher than everybody else, and a, a like group for us. Um, expectancy in eighth grade, we did kind of local, then state wide, and you can see our expectancy scores, uh, are, you know, relatively higher than, than anyone else we compare ourselves with. And then expectancy math scores, higher, uh, close, so higher than everyone else we compare ourselves with locally and statewide. So when, um, the board asked me, when we started, to start looking at maybe a higher body comparison, so let me, you, you just, but you, you're much higher than what you're not, you know, so, just, um, we're prepared to play zero, fair, to, to challenge, to pay due, you know, it's not compared to the good sector, right, but, you know, we get different ballers, so, I started with, just demographically, uh, we're up two, we're up population, we're up forty-four, Westwood school over twenty, down to about seventeen, okay? Uh, look at spending per student in that group, we spend belief amount per student as well, just kind of set it up as we go. So when we look at E L L growth, among reading growth, amongst all the schools, demographically, everything else, expectancy more than us, much less diverse than us, we're the highest E L L growth score, uh, amongst that, that higher-end group. Uh, eighth grade E L A, we're about one nil, they're above very close, they're higher, they're higher above white, but you know, it's like channels, and then higher than black and Canadian. So, um, growth was, was higher than we all, they all come eighth grade, we, we get this is a very selective group, which was the board asked for, um, we're lower than competitive. And then math growth, we were second to late in work, um, amongst that kind of higher-end group. So that's kind of a, a breakdown of, yeah, I look at our schools, you know, comparable schools in the county, uh, more statewide, and then a higher-end group to look at amongst leading districts that, um, you know, would be something that compare ourselves to. Hopefully, good questions. Anybody have any comments or questions regarding the monitoring report? Well, I, 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 too many, too quick, so it's, it's a pileup, sure, yeah. Um, I mean, first of all, Jared, that is impressive, I mean, this is, this is, these are great numbers, um, that our kids are getting the education, I mean, the signal is the kid are getting the education that we, that we, we, our intended group, and hence the education that we want them to get, I mean, particularly in the reading scores, math scores are great too, but the mean reading scores are, are really impressive, and then we start looking, we're comparing, as you said, to other districts that are larger than ours, that have more, you know, more resources, I mean, the value that we're providing for the students, for our community is, 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 is great, I mean, we, I work there with everybody. So I, I think it's terrific, and I like the new comparison, that it, you kind of chose where we are compared to other places as well, not just places around here, but other places, I mean, uh, this, this is something we should be, we should be very proud of, I think, right, because everyone, who's sitting here, right, how proud we is.
You know, I, you know, I'm concerned when you said, you know, the third grade scores were low, but then you see by sixth grade, boom, they're up, so I think that looks very favorably on what we do to get those kids up. I think there's a big positive in there for what, you know, staff and, you know, and doing with those kids, to get them up in three years, you know, up to the top, which is really impressive.
Yeah, no, absolutely, we, we'd like to be higher, higher starting, I mean, that's a great math, a constant, uh, issue for us, but yeah, we, we, we still were growing kids at a very high rate, we're, we're happy about that, you know, I mean, you know, eighth grade always been that much for us, because when, when we did grade, we prepared for the high school, and, and, I like, of course, they had a success, to take all the classes we offer, and I think, you know, we never show us, like, we, we're preparing kids, like, they're a high rate, they're great at both anybody in the state, which, we, that's more exciting for us.
Mike, have you looked to see if the pilot program at Westwood was equivalent with its scores, or was there any difference? We'll have a conversation for another time.
Well, we can have, yeah, I mean, it's a little higher, it, it's not, um, it's, I, I think it's a probably the highest football as a building.
Is that different pre, than pre-pilot?
Yeah, they, they are a gallery before us, yeah, but it's not, you know, sometimes you look at the outlier scores, right? It's not our outlier score, it's a little bit higher, you know, the, the pilot's going well, the, the issue there is, is not only can staff at a higher level, because we, not everyone loves, not everyone loves to do math, right? So it, it's not, it, it's working a lot, lots of number to do with the staff, but I agree, like, we have kids in the box, Maggie Knight, Dr. Lyons, and we have, we have two teachers on the path, they're liking it, and really like what they're doing there. Uh, if, you know, if it was a huge spike, right, then, then it would be over on the gate, we really got, you know, taken somewhere else. It, it, it's higher than that, but we hope to do that, so, if we want to continue with it, and you just see people are trying to get a bigger number like that, uh, but also, even at Westwood, that people, after a couple years, like, hey, you're just mad? Not, not my passion, right? Which, and without lucky teaching, we knew that could be part of it, and that's a great question, though. All right, anybody else have any other comments or questions? Well, we hope we'll pass on our regulation to all those teachers and the people who would love to. I'm sure that, that was, that was great, everyone. There were four or two more great views in the years to come. Okay, that's it for our monitoring report. We have probably a bit, and no unfinished business, it's a little bit arguing business. First item on business is the adjournment of the twenty twenty-five tax levy.
All righty, um, it's my pleasure to present the levy for twenty twenty-five to you tonight, and actually, uh, it's a additional good news, I think. What I'd like to do is just go over some of the key points that we've got, um, you've got a packet, but I'll just give you kind of an overview, this is the first time you'll see it, and then you'll see it again back in December, but, um, the levy's really comprised of a couple of things, a couple of the things that are important in setting it up is our E A V, our, our equalized assessed value for our community. It's estimated to increase about nine point one-two percent from last year, was one point three million to one point four million this round. The valuation is estimated, of course, by the McCamery County Assessor's Office, and is modified on historical estimates versus actual amounts. The actual amounts, uh, won't be finalized until spring, but we're gonna build it off the estimates, and they're, they're pretty good, they don't seem to fluctuate a whole lot, um, but it could fluctuate a little bit. Um, new property this year totals about two point four million, and that comes into our calculation. Um, and the other thing you have to remember is that we are subject to the property tax extension limitation law, or the P T L formula. We're limited by either five percent or C P I as of January first, twenty twenty-five, below or above those. C P I as of January first, twenty twenty-five was two point nine percent, so our limit is two point nine percent, and that is included in the calculation of our limiting rate, which determines how much the district levy are asked for. Last year's total extension was seventy-one million, three hundred and ninety thousand and fifty-two dollars. This year, including the P T L limit, the district will level levy less, we're asking for seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand, five oh one, so that's six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars less than what we asked for last year. This limiting, the limiting rate calculation takes into account the C P I limit of two point nine percent, and our total rate then is four point five six nine, and that, that's our grand total, that picks up the limiting rate plus the new property plus our debt service, so that, that dollar, that rate is a com- combination of all those items. This year, the district's debt service for twenty twenty-five is five point four million, it's the lowest it's been in two years. The last two years, we actually evaded some of our debt service, and we were a levy of eight million. This time, we're about two and a half million less than that. Um, so, the debt service isn't subject to the P T L, so that's how we get to that four point five six nine percent. So given these factors, the district's tax, district's tax rate is actually estimated to go down almost fifty cents from five point four four seven three last year to four point nine four seven four this year. I know it's separate schedules, but I just wanted to see, I've given you a lot of information really quickly there. Any questions so far?
I think the main point there already is, we, we bring the tax rate down often, the P A V goes up, but tax should not invest money, that is a great accomplishment.
That's true.
When, when people are asking, how many dollars more taxes might be, we're taking less money this year from our tax base than we did the year before, so I just want to rest of the board, I'm doing that, we've been doing that for the last couple of years, and I don't have a, you know, and, and someone's been with tax rate all the time, I can't tell you, uh, how great accomplishment that is.
Yeah, your guidance and support as far as helping us be very conservative in putting our debt service down is reflecting directly in this, uh, tax calculation this time, in fact, that we are asking for less than we did last year, which we don't care about very often. So, any questions related to that, or?
Anybody have any questions relating to, do you have more to present through the?
No, I, I mean, we can do the schedules if we'd like, but I think that pretty much summarizes.
All right, any other, any other questions, any comments regarding the termination of the twenty twenty-five tax levy? So this is a good, you're, this is a good meeting to be at, your tax, your, with the community, uh, district two hundred, because you guys seem good scores coming up, and taxes going down. That's, that's not, that's not something we, that I think is common. But anyway, all right, good morning, no further comments or anything, um, there's a suggested motion on page one hundred forty-seven, our materials.
Move to determine that twenty twenty-five tax levies, wait the reading and approve the resolution authorizing the estimated aggregate levy for the year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Well, sure, if you have any second by Dr. Bigwell, roll call please.
Mr. Hoodley?
Yes.
Dr. Bigwell?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six strategic action plans. What we're going to do is start on the files, we're using the two D action areas and, and step by step, just so you have them, you can see them, uh, and they're all on the same page. And is anybody have any questions or comments regarding, regarding the approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six strategic action plans? Now, there's a suggested motion on page one hundred fifty-nine, our materials.
Move to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six strategic plan, action plans.
Second.
By Dr. Bigwell, seconded by Mr. Hoodley, roll call please.
Dr. Bigwell?
Yes.
Mr. Hoodley?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
And then the next item on our, um, agenda is the approval of the ten-year health plate.
And then the next item on our, um, agenda is the approval of the ten-year health life. Ten-year health life safety survey report.
Yes, a jury and, uh, and Paul working role on this. It, it's required by state law to go through, to follow buildings, and then they fall into category, B, B, and C. And it's a timeline when we can do each. So staggering on there, we look at, you know, approval north, a track at north, um, you know, other than that, you know, the, the fact that's in the right way, it's a small number, and then, you know, as you get into B and C, you know, five-year out, kind of long-term plans. And then we get higher, but you can see it, the main thing, there are some big picture items, um, and north. Is, is there anything you want to say, or just answer questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think you covered a lot of what I was going to say, just kind of give you a general overview. So, um, if you want, I can go into what A B and C means or answer questions.
Well, the estimated costs that's covered, so it kind of helps that out a lot. It wasn't really clear from the, um, the children we got, so this is great to have this working out.
Yes.
It, it's almost staggering that we've got that of all of them, that Woodstar North has got, is, is, is high. I mean, it's, you know, it's two hundred and eighty thousand, North was a little higher, but when we're looking at two hundred thousand, we get the North, it's two, two point eight million dollars in expenses. So we have, that's like all the stuff, this, we're re, reversing a lot of stuff, I, that's staggering to me, but, um, I guess those are not the high priority items, and we do, we need to, but.
It, it talks to this again, you know, the worst case would be, we got a good set pool, you don't see it coming, right? I think that's why, these are right, so we just know in the back of our minds, hey, at some point, you know, the pool's going to pop up a ton of money, right? We know that at some point, we use track at north, we got a couple more years going down, for sure. But, and then like, you know, next coming year, for sure, we, we used to look at high tracks, we know it's a lot of money. So it, it just seems like people back in the mind that we're going to have to be correct some point.
I, I think a little bit of it will start being a little shocking, it's, it's our newest building. And it's the one that's kind of, that's, that's way out of line, if you're, not out of line, but way skewed in terms of the amount of, of work that needs to be done on it. I mean, I know that Woodstar High School pool is not the same as Wood, more connected thing, but, um, and the track and stuff like that, but, um.
I thought the same way, too, Carl, I was kind of surprised when I first heard that. Uh, I do have a question to follow up with that.
Sure.
So is it normal to replace an injector pump and to do some of the other work we're doing on dehumidifier, et cetera, for the pool? Is this the lifespan where we should be expecting for future?
Yeah, I'd say those priority items you're seeing in North for the pool, those are items that have reached their lifespan. And so, category B means you have five years to do it, so it's not a urgent, imminent, you gotta do it tomorrow. Um, we're looking out to say this should be replaced in five years.
And that, that's a normal lifespan, but for a pool, general, yeah, I, I think that pool is one about twenty.
Yeah.
It's, that's not quite twenty, so it's probably, uh, it's about fifteen years.
Yeah.
Will be, I don't know.
No, it's not twenty.
No, no, in five years, it will be, right? Right, I mean, in the five years, it's better, we, we, the pool will be twenty.
My other comment or question would be, with the track at north, when that was first put in, there were questions about the soils out there to begin with. Does this relate to why we're having issues today? Could you speak to that at all or not? Because we, we had issues and concerns about this when it was first built.
Yeah, I'd say the, the issues you're seeing up there are very similar to the issues we had at Woodstar High School and the project we just did there, um.
It looks good, Mike.
Thank you. Um, and the other thing to note on the track at that high school is that it's a priority C. So priority C items are recommendations. You don't have a fixed time that you have to get those done, they're purely recommendations, um, but I would.
Based on what? What would, why are you projecting out that far when you're not even, I mean, it's not that big a deal, you're saying, but it's still a recommendation?
It, it's more the state's guidelines. So exterior paving projects are priority Cs by the way that the state sets it up. But Paul had a guy look at that track specifically. When they, they brought up, hey, you know, Jack, okay, he, he told us there was time, you know, but it's not, I mean, he, he walked, it was cracked. It's not in amazing shape, I mean, at some point, I don't want to address it, but, you know, the approval, I mean, that, that's, that's first step, right? I mean, that's what I think about this team, they're saying, okay, let's, we're choosing planning, hey, you know, we're going to have to do that pool, right? And then eventually, um, probably will definitely look at the track.
All right, are there any other questions or comments regarding the ten-year health life safety survey report? If not, there's a suggested motion on page two twenty-four of our materials.
Move to approve the 2025 ten-year health life safety report.
Second.
Well, should I, Dr. Bidwell, seconded by Mr. Hedley, thank you both, roll call please.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley? Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, thank, thank you both for putting it up. Push that. Thank you both for coming, I appreciate you coming and taking some time to explain to us what's going on. If you have any questions.
Of course, thanks.
Okay, uh, last item on our agenda then is our committee reports, if any committees met, if any committees have any reports since last meeting. Mike sent you out, Dr. Bond sent you out, the material regarding what's going on with the A I committee, so you know what's happening there. And, um, that's the A I committee reports, the A I committee reports. Okay, if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
Okay.
By Dr. Ferris, seconded by Dr. Bidwell, roll call please.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Everybody have a nice Thanksgiving.